House, come to order. Will the members please rise to the emigration delivered by the gentleman from Taylor 51 and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day you give us. We truly are blessed to serve our great Commonwealth today in this historic state capital. As we go through each day, we pray to look through your eyes and see your vision. We seek your heart to serve and love one another, just like Jesus. Not our will, but your will be done. Heavenly Father, wrap your arms around Ukraine for protection and comfort. Touch our friend Richard White for healing. We ask for grace and mercy and blessings to all public servants, from the White House to the courthouse. This is our prayer, and all God's people say it.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk will sound the chime. Members indicate your presence as the roll is called.
Representative Major.
He's left on the bottom.
Here.
Representative Beckler.
Representative Bentley.
Here.
Representative Plank.
Present.
Representative Bojanowski.
Here.
Representative Bowling.
Here.
Representative Branscombe.
Here.
Representative Ratcher. Representative Bray.
Present.
Representative Bridges.
Here.
Representative Brown.
Here.
Representative Birch. Representative Callaway.
Here.
Representative Cantrell.
Here.
Representative Decker.
Here.
Representative Dixon.
Present.
Representative Donahue.
Here.
Representative Dawson. Representative Johnson. Representative DuPlessis. Representative Elliott. Representative Fisher.
Here.
Representative Pfister.
Here.
Representative Flannery. Representative Cunningham.
Present.
Representative Flood. Representative Fraser Gordon.
Yes.
Representative Freeland.
Present.
Representative Uyghur.
Here.
Representative Gentry.
Here.
Representative Doob.
Here.
Representative Graham.
Present.
Representative Hale.
Here.
Representative Hart.
Here.
Representative Hatt.
Here.
Representative He.
Here.
Representative Penron.
Present.
Representative Aaron.
Here.
Representative Huff, Regina Huff. Representative Thomas Huff.
Here.
Representative Ince.
Here.
Representative Jenkins.
Here.
Representative Johnson.
Here.
Representative Keen.
Present, in the room.
Representative. Representative Burke, Corning.
Here.
Representative Cook.
Here.
Representative Haynes.
Here.
Representative Hope Carney.
Here.
Representative Lawrence.
Yeah.
Representative Lewis, Lewis, Representative Scott Derrick Lewis.
Present.
Representative Scott Lewis. Representative Lockett.
Here.
Representative Mattis.
Present.
Representative Marzian. Representative Massey.
Here, in the room.
Representative McCool.
Here.
Representative Coy.
Here.
Representative McPherson.
Here.
Representative Keen. Representative Aaron.
Present, sir.
Representative Ince.
Here.
Representative Charles Miller.
Here.
Representative Jeremy Miller.
Here.
Representative Mentor.
Here.
Representative Moser.
Here.
Representative Theena.
Here.
Representative Osborne.
Here.
Representative Columbo.
Here.
Representative Petrie. Representative Pollard.
Here.
Representative Pratt.
Here.
Representative Fonty.
Here.
Representative Rayburn.
Here.
Representative Raymond.
Here.
Representative Rudy.
Here.
Representative Riley.
Here, sir.
Representative Roberts.
Here.
Representative Olin.
Present.
Representative Rudy.
Here.
Representative Santoro.
Here.
Representative Scott.
Present.
Representative Sharp.
Present.
Representative Sheldon.
Here.
Representative Smith.
Here.
Representative Cheryl Stevenson.
Here.
Representative Pamela Stevenson.
Aye.
Representative Packard Laberty.
Present.
Representative Tate.
Present.
Representative Thomas.
Present.
Representative Tenny.
Here.
Representative Tipton.
Present.
Representative Lewis.
Here.
Representative Upchurch.
Here.
Representative Weathers.
Here.
Representative Wesley.
Here.
Representative Weststrom.
Present.
Representative Wheatley.
Here.
Representative White. And Representative Wilner.
Any member not registering their attendance, please rise. Clerk let the record reflect, the gentleman from Creighton and the gentleman from Clark are in attendance. Being eighty-five members indicating their presence, the call must declare, and the House is ready to proceed. Next order of business is the excuse of absent members. Gentleman from Spencer.
Mr. Speaker, I move, if you serve, to absent members be excused in accordance with the House rules.
That objection, so ordered. Gentleman from Spencer.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of lying members who wish to co-sponsor bills or submit own modifications, and to assign the proper makers with the clerk to do so.
That objection, so ordered. Next order of business is the approval of the Journal. Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, I move you, sir, that the Journal from Monday, March 14, 2022, be approved as written.
That objection, the Journal from Monday, March 14, 2022, is approved as written. Next order of business is the introduction of guests. Chair recognizes the lady from Davis.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the House Representative, I would like to welcome Scott Alvey, Executive Director of the Kentucky Historical Society, and thank the staff, the board, and all the volunteers for hosting this evening.
Next order of business is the second reading of bills. There being no need. Next order of business, reporter committees. Clerk, please report.
Hearing, hearing. The Education Committee reports House Bill 639, an act relating to school population changes, making an appropriation therefore, and declaring emergency. Representative Tipton should pass the rule. House Bill 663, an act relating to financial disclosures of post-secondary education institutions, Representative McCool should pass with rules to rules with House Committee substitute one. Senate Bill 9, an act relating to early literacy education, making an appropriation therefore, Senator West should pass with House Committee substitute one, and House Committee Amendment one, the title amendment. Senate Bill 151, an act relating to school breakfast, Senator Howes should pass. The Transportation Committee reports Senate Bill 566, an act relating to the transportation of persons, Representative Pfister should pass the rules. Senate Bill 114, an act relating to the disposition of catalytic converters and other items containing metal, Senator Questorfield should pass with House Committee substitute one. Senate Bill 119, an act relating to the placement of honorary signs on a state highway or bridge, Senator Pigden should pass with House Committee substitute one, and House Committee Amendment one, the title amendment. Senate Bill 114, as reported, should pass with House Committee substitute one. Senate Bill 174, an act relating to slow-moving vehicles, Senator Howes should pass with House Committee substitute one. Veterans, Military Affairs and Public Protection reports House Bill 18106, an act relating to the termination of automatic renewal offers and continuous service offers, Representative Questrom should pass the rules of House Committee substitute one. Senate Bill 121, 101, an act relating to first responders, Senator Carpenter should pass. And Senate Bill 189, an act relating to fire protection, Senator Barrett should pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All those bills and resolutions receiving favorable committee reports shall be considered as having their first reading, in order placed upon the calendar. All those bills having received a previous reading shall be considered as having their second reading, in order placed in possession of the Rules Committee for further action. Next order of business, the orders of the day. Any member that wishes to be acknowledged and recognized to speak, please rise from your seat, and you'll be acknowledged to approach the microphone. Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, I move you, sir, that House Bill 659 be taken from its place in the orders of the day, read for a third time by title and sponsor only, and placed upon its passage.
Motion is made and signed, that House Bill 659 be taken from the place in the orders of the day, read for the third time by title and sponsor only, and placed upon its passage. Clerk, please report.
House Bill 659, an act relating to the historic preservation tax credit, Representative Rudy.
Gentleman from McCracken, one.
Mr. Speaker, in 2021 General Assembly, has House Bill 249 in the waning hours of the session. Included in House Bill 249 was an increase in the program cap for the Kentucky Historic Tax Credit Program. It raised the program cap from $5 million to $100 million. There was a small problem with that. While the intent was to expand the program, and we did raise the overall cap in last year's General Assembly, we did not address two areas. First off, we did not address the per-project cap for owner-occupied properties, and it remained at $60,000. And we did not increase the commercial properties cap, it remained at $400,000. So the individual projects, while we raised the ceiling of the overall project, we didn't raise the limits on the individual ones. And the fact of the matter is, it would take 250 projects to fully realize the impact in what we were trying to do when we expanded this program. There are usually, in a typical year, only 25 to 30 applicants, so we will not ever realize all the potential of this program. The second portion we failed to recognize was because of the action of the 2019 General Assembly, where we eliminated the bank franchise tax. The bank franchise tax is the only tax that is allowed to be offset with the historic tax credit program. House Bill 659 seeks to address these two problems. It will raise the per-project cap on the program to $5 million. And it will allow us, it will raise it from $5 million to get it to realize where we need to go. It will double the project cap on owner-occupied to $120,000, and it will increase the per- project cap on a commercial property to $10 million. And it will also change that the bank franchise tax that was formerly transferable, and the only thing transferable, but it is no more, we will now be able to offset bank income tax that was replacing the bank franchise tax. But fixing this bill, question was called for, but I will say that two projects, at least two projects, who have already been approved for the expiration of the bank franchise tax, the Shakertown Village and the Houlihan House in Breckinridge County have no money to offset with this tax credit, and this will benefit both of those programs, and hopefully countless others, including those trying to rebuild after the last big storms last December. Mr. Speaker, I move the passage of House Bill 659.
Question for the bodies. Passage to House Bill 659. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will take the roll.
Baker.
Yes.
Banta.
Yes.
Beckler.
Aye.
Bentley.
Yes.
Plank.
Aye.
Bojanowski.
Aye.
Bowling.
Aye.
Branscombe.
Aye.
Ratcher. Bray.
Aye.
Bridges.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Birch. Callaway.
Yes.
Cantrell.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Dixon.
Aye.
Donahue.
Yes.
Dossit. DuPlessis. Elliott. Fisher.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes.
Elliott. Fisher. Pfister. Flannery. Fleming.
Aye.
Flood. Fraser Gordon.
Yes.
Freeland.
Yes.
Uyghur.
Yes.
Gentry.
Mr. Speaker, I yield to the stand for Mr. Spoh. I don't have my rulebook in front of me.
Gooch.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hale.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Heath.
Yes.
Everin.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Regina Huff.
Yes.
Thomas Huff.
Yes.
Ince.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Keen.
Yes, sir.
Kirk McCormick.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hope Carney.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Yeah.
Derrick Lewis.
Yes.
Scott Lewis.
Yes.
Lockett.
Aye.
Mattis.
Aye.
Marzian.
Yes.
McCool.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
McPherson.
Aye.
Neen.
Yes.
Meredith.
Aye.
Miles.
Yes.
Charles Miller.
Yes.
Jerry Miller.
Aye.
Moser.
Yes.
Mentor.
Yes.
Theena.
Yes.
Petrie.
Pollard. Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Fonty.
Yes.
Rayburn.
No.
Raymond.
Yes.
Reed.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Roland.
Yes.
Rudy.
Aye.
Santoro.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Sharp.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Cheryl Stevenson.
Yes.
Pamela Stevenson.
Aye.
Packard Laberty.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Thomas.
Aye.
Tenny.
Yes.
Tipton.
Yes.
Truitt.
Yes.
Upchurch.
Aye.
Weber.
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Weststrom.
Yes.
Wheatley.
Aye.
White.
Wilner.
All members cast their votes. Clerk for fourth roll call.
Representative Mattis, can you read your, uh, query? Nay.
Gentleman from Boyle. Clerk let the record reflect. Gentleman from Boyle is casting a yes vote.
There are eighty-seven yays and two nays. One abstain.
Being eighty-seven members voting aye, two members voting nay, House Bill 659 is passed. Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, I move you, sir, that the vote by which House Bill 659 was passed be reconsidered, and the motion to reconsider be laid upon the table.
That objection, so ordered. Gentleman from Lincoln. Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the rules to grant floor privileges to Mr. Scott Alvey, the Executive Director of the Kentucky Historical Society.
That objection, so ordered. Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, I move you, sir, that House Concurrent Resolution 120 be taken from its place in the orders of the day, read by, idled sponsor only, and placed upon its passage.
Motion made, Executive, House Concurrent Resolution 120 be taken from its place in the orders of the day, read for the third time by title and sponsor only, and placed upon its passage. Mr. Clerk, please report.
House Concurrent Resolution 120, a concurrent resolution establishing the Kentucky History Caucus within the Kentucky General Assembly. Representative Jerry Miller.
Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, I yield to the gentleman from Jefferson 36 for explanation of the resolution and motion thereof.
Chair recognizes the gentleman from Jefferson 36 for explanation of the resolution and a motion thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In 1792, citizens of Kentucky sought to free themselves from Virginia, become the fifteenth state and the first west of the Appalachian Mountains. Whereas in this 200 years of statehood, Kentucky has had four constitutions, first being adopted in 1792, second in 1799, the third passed in this very chamber, 1850, and finally the fourth, under which we currently serve, in 1891. And I want to read you the preamble to the 1891 Constitution. It says, "We, the people of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, grateful to Almighty God for the civil, political, and religious liberties we enjoy, invoking the continuance of these blessings, do ordain and establish the Constitution." And I think it was Almighty God who, without request and without intervention, granted that this resolution be granted the number 120. And that number 120 is sacred to Kentuckians because we have 120 counties, reaching from the Big Sandy to the Mississippi, from the Ohio to Sticking Creek. And it is in that spirit that we have formed, we are forming, the Kentucky History Caucus. I would like to thank Director Scott Alvey, Stuart Sanders, and the rest of the Kentucky Historical Society team for suggesting creation of this caucus. And Director Alvey assures me that this will not be a paper caucus, that he will host events in our clubhouse, the old Capitol, and have meetings and seminars of historic value. So thank you all those who have joined this caucus once it's created. If you have not already, please contact Tommy Wilson to add your name to the list. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I move the passage of HCR 120.
Motion made for the adoption of House Concurrent Resolution 120. Is there any debate or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, send your chimes. Please call the roll.
Baker.
Yes.
Banta.
Yes.
Beckler.
Aye.
Bentley.
Aye.
Plank.
Aye.
Bojanowski.
Aye.
Bowling.
Aye.
Branscombe.
Aye.
Ratcher. Bray.
Aye.
Bridges.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Birch. Callaway.
Yes.
Cantrell.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Dixon.
Aye.
Donahue.
Yes.
Dossit. Dawson.
Yes.
DuPlessis. Elliott.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Pfister.
Yes.
Flannery. Fleming.
Aye.
Flood. Fraser Gordon.
Yes.
Freeland.
Yes.
Uyghur.
Yes.
Gentry.
Aye.
Gooch.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hale, or Hale rather.
Aye.
Hart.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Heath.
Here.
Everin.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Regina Huff.
Yes.
Thomas Huff.
Aye.
Ince.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keen.
Yes, sir.
Kirk McCormick.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hope Carney.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Yep.
Garrett Lewis.
Yes.
Scott Lewis. Lockett.
Aye.
Mattis.
Aye.
Marzian. Massey.
Yes.
McCool.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
McPherson.
Aye.
Neen.
Yes.
Meredith.
Aye.
Miles.
Yes.
Miller, Charles Miller.
Yes.
Jerry Miller.
Aye.
Mentor.
Yes.
Moser.
Yes.
Theena.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Columbo.
Yes.
Petrie. Pollard.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Fonty.
Yes.
Rayburn.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Reed.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Roberts.
Yes.
Roland. Rudy.
Aye.
Santoro.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Sharp.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Cheryl Stevenson.
Yes.
Pamela Stevenson.
Yes.
Packard Laberty.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Thomas.
Aye.
Tenny.
Yes.
Tipton.
Aye.
Truitt.
Yes.
Upchurch.
Aye.
Weber.
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Weststrom.
Yes.
Wheatley.
Aye.
White. Wilner.
Have all members voted? Would any member like to change or explain their vote? Clerk have it took the roll, there being eighty-eight members voting yea, no members voting nay. House Concurrent Resolution 120 is adopted. Gentleman from Jefferson.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the motion by which HCR 120 was passed be laid upon the table, and that motion, uh...
Without objection, clinkers apply. Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, that concludes the orders of...
Mr. Speaker, the ladies from verse 55 request adoption of Resolution 125.
Gentleman from McCracken.
Mr. Speaker, I yield to the ladies from Verser for action on House Resolution 125.
Chair recognizes the lady from Verser.
Thank you, both, and thank you, chamber, for considering Resolution 125 today. As we've seen with our conversations thus far, how important history is to our Commonwealth, and how important this society is, and we certainly appreciate this for Alvey and his team. I know you have the entire resolution in front of you. I would like to call your attention to one whereas and one section. Under the first whereas, the second line says, "Preserving the history of the Commonwealth for future generations." And that is actually the crux and the importance of this resolution. And then finally, in section one, the second line, "The Kentucky Historical Society, we commend them for their commitment to the education and preservation of Kentucky's history to be enjoyed and appreciated for generations to come." And the reason I draw your attention to those two sentences is, my hometown of Harrisburg will actually kick off the 250th anniversary, and that will actually start the domino effect. Roll call for cosponsorships for all the members? Would the speaker please rule?
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll for those wanting to co-sponsor?